Commissioner Maddox, you're the incumbent. And we're happy to have you here today to talk about your seat, which is at large, right? What have you accomplished as a county commissioner? And why should you be reelected? And we're going to give you two minutes. And Jackie will be giving you the signs. Once again, what have you accomplished during your term as an incumbent? And why should you be reelected, Commissioner? Two minutes.
Thank you. So, can everybody hear me? Is this good? All right, is that better? There we go. So, my name is Nick Maddox. I'm the county commissioner at large. I've been in the seat now for about 12 years. My third term coming up on my fourth. I think while in the seat, Leon County itself has achieved good growth. And I believe we also have been very, very smart in the way we've done it. I also believe that we have done the best we can to keep down the tax rate to make sure we're not passing on, back in the early 2010 stages, passing on what was then a bad economy to our electorate. We held the miller's rate as constant as long as we could. And even now, we're continuing to be smart with the way we go about spending our dollars. Hereforth, I think COVID was a big thing over the past couple of years. When COVID came about, the county stepped up to the plate, got money out to our local businesses to make sure that they were able to stay afloat. Some got as much as $50,000. There was a lot, got 20, and some even 5. During that time, a lot of small businesses were going out of business. We stepped to the plate, made sure that we did what we could to make sure our small businesses in Leon County stayed afloat. We are doing all we can to deal with and conquer the affordable housing problems, looking at different ways to do that. I would say that we've just been very, very smart about the way we spent our dollars, very conscious of how we deal with our businesses here in Leon County, and very conscious about listening to what our electorate would like for us to do, and being good partners to each and every one of you. And I look forward to continuing to serve. Orange Avenue is about to change with the development that's coming there. We'll see, the fairground is going to be amazing. 14 of 17 projects are going to happen on the South Side, which is going to dramatically change the South Side. And most thing I'm concerned about is making sure that as that change happens, the people who live there are able to enjoy the benefits that are coming that way. And so, I hope that you all have been able to see some of the good things that are happening in Cascade Park and other things that have happened in Leon County, and that you would agree that we have made progress and we're going to continue to make even more progress moving forward. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner. And there are opportunities for rebuttal if you see necessary, anyone here on the panel. And I'm going to ask this question to all three of you, starting with Josh, moving towards Rudy. And please just give us your full name when you start, because there might be some in the audience who are just starting to pay attention to this race just now. So, Josh, and candidates, you just heard what Commissioner Maddox just said. Tell us why you're the better choice on Election Day. And Josh, you have two minutes.
So, first of all, thank you guys for having me. My name's Josh Johnson. And you see, I'm the only one with a mic in my hand. And I thought I was at a disadvantage, but now I kind of feel like I got a sword in my hand. And between this red cape, the matador and the bull are going to go to work. So, let me tell you why I think I'm the best choice for this race. Not only am I a seventh-generation Leon County, and I have a vested interest in this place thriving, I am also a local educator. I teach economics and government. I am a small business owner, the only small business owner in this race, and the steward and president of one of Tallahassee's proudest institutions in the 621 Art Gallery. I think that I have cemented a reputation that is honest enough and active enough to serve in this seat, and it is also undergirded by an expertise that I think will be apt for this seat. There were some comments mentioned before that I just have a disagreement with. I do not think that we have spent our money wisely for various reasons, and we'll get to that. And I do not think that we have listened to our citizens. I think public input is an important part of the process, and I think that is something that has been neglected across the board. Thank you.
All right, so, because I think you're both finished before your time is up, so say it again.
This will be half.
Right.
This will be one minute, and this is your done.
So, I got another minute?
You got another minute?
I'm just trying.
I was listening. My name's Nikki Zumbo. My legal name is Dominique. That's my family name. However, it got shortened very early on in my lifetime to Nikki. So, I have that on the ballot, and that's what I go by. I do prefer the name Nikki. I'm from Oviedo. It's a small town outside of Orlando. It's right in between Sanford and Winter Park, Florida. I've lived all over Florida and worked in housing during my studies and after the fact as well. I hope to bring a lot of awareness for a couple of different issues, one being housing and secondly, mental health. I've noticed a huge need for affordable housing here in Tallahassee. I have a great list of ideas of things that we could do and policies we can enact that can provide better homes and sustainable futures for the residents here in Tallahassee and Leon County. I come to you in solidarity. I truly feel I'm a good representation of the community. I am a young professional. I've been working here in Tallahassee for many years. I put myself through FSU and continue to support myself wholly. And I see that all around. I see a lot of bright futures, and I definitely don't want to lose the residents that we have that want to be here. I want to focus more on retaining those residents so they can partake in those programs and can enjoy being small business owners here in town. Thank you.
Okay. And before I forget, Josh, you're going to have to join as a small business owner. And that's open to all of you here.
Come on, we're to the straw poll.
Rudy, if you want to wrap up this one, the first question?
Yes. Again, thank you all. It's good to see you, all of you, again. My name is Rudy Ferguson. Well, my real name is Rudolph, but I don't like to use Rudolph because of the Christmas season. And I had to be Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer growing up in middle school. So, I said that to say, I think I'm the better candidate on the serious notice because I'm a servant leader. I just didn't wake up one morning and decide I wanted to run for office. I've been doing this for 30 years. I'm 50 years old. I'm proud of that because my work in community started when I was 20. And I didn't become a pastor and then start working in the community. I became a community leader, and then I was elevated to the office of pastor, to leading people. That's what I do. This is my service. Moreover, to the point that I started working for the Urban League at a peer council at the age of 20, working with ultra-at-risk youth in my community, which is in Griffin Heights neighborhood that we have, you've seen throughout the years, the poor zip code in Leon County or in Florida for that matter. But I don't blame anyone. I worked in my community to build out my own community because that's where I live. More importantly, that caught the attention at the age of 23, where I laid great governor law and child, decided to make me one of his appointees to serve on the newly-created MLK Institute for Nonviolence. In that capacity, I served for seven years, traveling the country, speaking at the United Nations and around the state of Florida in regards to what we need as far as nonviolence is concerned. I am a servant leader. I'm a consensus builder. I don't allow my faith to be projected on others. I believe in the constitutional rights. I believe in our civil liberties. I believe that everyone should have a right. And do I believe that our commissioner has really made full proof of the decision that they made regarding our money? I'll be honest with you, no. While I like him as a person, as a commissioner, I don't think that he has fulfilled that responsibility in regards to how our taxpayers should feel. As a commissioner, I have to listen to you. I have to learn from you, that I'm able to lead for you. That is how it works. We don't come to see you all when it's time to be reelected or to get elected. We see you all on a day-to-day basis because, as my motto says, I am serving the people's interests. And I'll say this in closing, run with Rudy because Rudy has been running with you. I'm Rudy Ferguson. I approve this message.
Commissioner, do you want to take a rebuttal on any of these comments? If so, you got a minute.
I'll be very quick. A lot of people in here are familiar with me. If you haven't seen me in here, you've sat down with me and had conversations. There's not one person in here who can say that I have not heard what you had to say and responded to such. I'm not a person who just makes decisions on my own. I hear what you have to say and weigh those things and take them into every decision I make. And so, the thought that, you know, I'm not a listener or I haven't taken consideration of things that you have had to say when it comes to decisions that I make about our tax dollars is just wholly incorrect in my opinion. Just to name a few, I'm sure the Doak Campbell vote is going to come up. Well, if you think about it, 10 million went to FAMU, 1 million went to TCC, and 20 million went to Doak Campbell Stadium. All in all, Doak Campbell brings about $85 million, about a billion of capital to our city each and every day. 35 jobs, they say, were created, but what about the jobs that would be created outside the stadium? What about those businesses that'll have to add more folks along the way because of the things that happen? So, I still think that was a good decision to make, and I think we heard what people had to say. Thank you.
All right, so the commissioner brought up FSU funding and a couple others. Does anyone want to rebut the rebuttal?
Absolutely.
All right, so you're going to give a minute each. Start off with you, Rudy.
Well, in all fairness...
Once again, it's a minute, so when you see the red.
Well, FAMU, of course, needed the 10 million. I don't disregard that Florida State didn't need the 10, they need the money. But I think in all fairness, given the situation, that the 32304 area code where the stadium sits, I think we have to prioritize our citizens to ensure that they have the necessary resources. I'm not against Florida State, let me make that clear. But what I am is that if this time, in the juncture coming out of a pandemic, we should have made clear across the board, 10 million Florida State, 10 million FAMU, I'm sorry, I'm using my Barry White voice, 10 million all across the board would have really laid some money to the side so we can do some real tangible, good work in these communities to show our citizens that we genuinely care, and we are one Tallahassee and we're one Leon County.
I definitely have to speak on... I definitely feel a bit obligated to speak on this, being as I am a Florida State graduate. I have concerns for the stadium. I've been there. I've seen a lot of the infrastructure crumbling. I've seen a lot of repairs. I've talked to staff who are responsible for fixing and cleaning, and they are also a little at a loss. They want to see more investment into the job that they do at the stadium and the stadium as a whole. I've said it before, if I was a parent touring FSU and the stadium, I would not send my kid there just based on what I saw in the bathrooms at the stadium. It was a disgrace. It wasn't clean. It's past the point of cleaning repairs. It needs to be totally renovated. So, just keep in mind that some of that money can go to good use. I know there's a lot of talk about that money being used for ADA repairs. I have personally seen handicap stalls without doors at FSU, so I know that that money is going to go to good use. I can't say that the total bill should have been $27 million, and I hope to recuperate some of that cost on the back end, so thank you so much.
As an economist, a sales tax is regressive. $27 million was too much to give to a stadium from a regressive sales tax. As a community member, the reason that I, up against an incumbent, have enjoyed the momentum that I have enjoyed, 300 individual donors, that's more than everybody in this race combined. Last month, that was with 114 to spare. I'm not sure how many it is to spare this month. More substantial endorsements than anybody in this race. I've been in since January, and I've lived fundraising for four of the months I've been in. This is an indictment. I am a seventh-generation Leon County. Nobody loves Leon County the way that I do, and I believe that. I love Florida State. Some stuff just has to be done in different ways or not at all. And if we can't use a little common sense, ingenuity, and policy mandate to make the system work, well, then we need to do something else, and that's what we're starting to do.
Okay, well, let's switch to another topic, and this is for you, Commissioner Maddox. Do you consider Leon County business-friendly? All right, this is a business group, and we have certain opinions, and in your answer, your two-minute answer, Commissioner, how do you define business-friendly and what examples can you give?
I think we've come a long way. Is there more we can do? Of course, there's always more you can do, but I think when I started in 2010 to where we are right now, a lot of people have seen a lot of improvement in the way we do business and the people that we reach out to, and the people that are able to access us here in Leon County. So, to say, do I think we're business-friendly? I think we are. Do I think there's more we can do? Yes, I think we do. I think there is. But there's a balance there, and I think we all, as business owners, or you all as business owners, you are conscious of the fact that there's a balance between being business-friendly and also being responsible to our environment in other ways. And what I've noticed as a county commissioner since I've been there is that none of you, none of you that have come to me or have had conversations are so concerned with us being business-friendly that you're not concerned with us maintaining our character. And I appreciate that. And so, being sensible about how we move forward and becoming business-friendly, like we were looking at the affordable housing issue, how do we continue to make it as easy as possible for you all to build in Leon County? How do we make it as easy as possible for you all to grow your businesses in Leon County? Being able to articulate those things and do those things and come up with common sense policies? How do we get up to $15 minimum wage while also making sure that you're not killing your payroll by getting there? Making sensible measures of trying to get there is the way we do it. Listening to you all and being partners with you all is how you do it, is how we do it. And what I think in return is, because we're able to do that in Leon County, you guys are very good at working with us and moving in that direction, but also respecting the fact that we have to respect our environment. Look at the beautiful trees out here today, as well as work towards making sure that everybody in Leon County has a chance to live a lifestyle that can maintain a level of achievement that we will want to see, not just for our families, but for our neighbor's families. So, to say, I say that you guys have been great partners. We're in a good place, and we continue to be more and more business-friendly every day. Thank you.
Nikki, I'm going to throw that question to you and the other candidates. I'm going to tee it up this way. Do you consider Leon County business-friendly? If elected, how will you ensure small business owners are part of the community conversation?
Certainly. Thank you. I did work at a small, well, what used to be a small business in Tallahassee, Florida, now a huge business in Tallahassee, Florida. I worked for a flooring company that started as a residential flooring company. You know, they had a few clients here and there, and then they grew to be the contractor for the state offices, the schools, and the hospitals. So, they started doing houses, and then they moved to big institutions, all here in Tallahassee over the course of, I believe, 35 years. So, to say Tallahassee isn't business-friendly, I mean, the proof is in the pudding. We have people here that enjoy the businesses, champion the businesses. Government as a whole has typically been very business-friendly. There's a lot of loans. There's a lot of programs that are available to business owners. And what I'd like to do, excuse me, what I'd like to do is facilitate a central site where those business owners can learn about those programs and find better ways to apply for those programs. I know that that's kind of the difficulty there, is they're very thick with red tape. So, making sure that our business owners are grasping what's available to them in Tallahassee and otherwise so that they can grow, start small, grow big. There's a couple businesses here in Tallahassee that started off as like a little shack in my hometown. Four Rivers was a shack, guys, and now we have Four Rivers in Tallahassee. Jeremiah's was a tiny little ice cream parlor for me growing up that I used to go to for summer camp. Now we have Jeremiah's in the northeast side of town. So, you know, Tallahassee has always been business-friendly. I want us to grow here, and I want us to bring in more business as well. Thank you.
All right, Josh, same question. Do you see the county government being business-friendly? And if so or not, how are you going to improve upon it?
So, the answer to that question is yes. While I am uglier than most of you, I'm still better-looking than some of you, but I am one of you. I'm the only candidate in this race that's a business owner. I know what it feels like. As we speak today, I have contracts with Coca. I manage a Smithsonian Institute-inducted artist. I know what it feels like to have to carry overhead, to have to carry people, to have to sign contracts. Whatever perception I've gained up until this point, I need you to understand that not only is Leon County friendly to the business community, Leon County under Josh Johnson or that sector of Leon County would still be friendly to the business community. Do we have responsibilities that hinge on things other than business in Leon County? Like the way we deal with social things and the way we deal with infrastructure, which still is a subsidiary of business, the way we deal with local governance where it doesn't relate to business? Of course we do. And of course, those things will be prioritized as well. But the business community is dear to my heart. I am also the product of a 27-year-old small business. My mother and father had a childcare center growing up. I know what it feels like for the flickering of the lights to hinge on how friendly a county or a city can be to small business. The flickering of the lights will stay on with Josh Johnson. I promise you that. Thank you.
All right, Rudy?
Well, I let him, Mr. Johnson, assume that he knows my story. He is not the only candidate up here with a small business. That's important to understand that before you make any assumptions about anyone else, you must do your homework. It's important to listen so that you can learn and that you can leave. So, let me say this. I am a business owner, wherein I own the Dream Center of Tallahassee located on Thaw Street. Moreover, we have a transportation company called Sesley Rose Transit, where we transport individuals on Medicaid and Medicare of those who are emergency services. So, again, I understand the gravity. I understand the necessity of signing paychecks. I understand how it works when you're trying to make sure that the people that you've employed are going to be able to feed their families. Do I think Leon County is business-friendly? We can do better. We can go further. We can do more because everyone is coming here. In this room, you have the understanding that your business counts, and you really want to make that work. Why do we have so many Chamber of Commerce? That's for a reason. Because everybody's not getting what they need. Some people are feeling left out. Some people are being pushed aside. Some people feel that they are not a part of the equation. We need to look further into how we do business and how we make business in Tallahassee profitable, not just on the tax base end, but also for their families. I have that luxury of raising a family. I've been married 30 years to my high school sweetheart. I'm 20, she's still 27. I'm sorry, I'm 50, she's still 27. And the reality of it all is, and I have four grown children, so I know what it's like to run a business and feed the children and clothe them and keep the roof over their head. I'm Rudy Ferguson. I approve this message.
And I also want to add that from a small business owner's standpoint, you know, when it comes to county and city government, sometimes just stay out of our way, stay out of our pocket. Let us be entrepreneurial and also let us be at the table because we can bring you solutions that are not restricted by certain philosophies or punitive type of attitudes. So, that's what NEBA is about. That's why we're happy to have you here. And we don't always have to agree, but let's at least be at the table talking. And so, that's what we're doing here right now. So, thank you. Commissioner, the next question is, you've heard your opponents talking here in the debate. You've seen them on the campaign. I'd like to get your evaluation of them. And tell us why they're not the best choice or group of two. Wow. What do they lack? Or what is the liabilities that they bring to the seat?
So, man, what a question.
That's why you're here.
Well, first thing I want to do is say that my wife is a business owner. Since we're talking about business owners, Maddox Dance Company is one of the premier dance companies here in Leon County. If you haven't seen the videos, they're absolutely amazing. Now, what I would not do, what I absolutely would not do, is talk about what my opponents can't do or have not done. But what I will do is tell you that I'm the most experienced in sitting in the seat. See, you can talk a lot about what you're going to do when you get there, but it's different sitting in the seat. I can say so because I was once a candidate too, and I remember sitting there thinking about what Cliff Thale did every day as a county commissioner, then maybe even saying some things that I thought I could do that I really couldn't do. You guys are very gracious and patient with me and understood that I didn't know what I could do. But when I got there, I realized, I'm only one out of seven other votes, only one. I do nothing by myself. The experience that we had, that I have as a county commissioner is something that none of the other candidates have, and that's the most important thing in this race. We're looking at inflation at all-time-high numbers. We're looking at affordable housing that's killing us, violent crime that we're working on each and every day, giving you guys access to capital so you can continue to create small businesses and do the things that you've done. Impact-wise, what we've done is 2,900 jobs have been created, $430 million impact annually by OEB. 2,750 businesses were assisted. 13,200 jobs were preserved. 317 businesses filed with MWBEs. The only thing I can tell you is, experience is going to matter over the next four years as we get through COVID and come out of it. And I'm the only one that has it during the job. And I think, as I look across this room, all of you can say that I've done a decent job of what I do. Have I always did what you wanted me to do? Have you always agreed with me? Maybe not, but I've done exactly what our moderator said. And sometimes I've stayed out of the way and let you do what you had to do as business owners to make us a great county and a great place to do business, and I'll continue to do that and partner with you on being the best county when it comes to business growth and the best county when it comes to growth overall. So, I look forward to it.
So, I tried to get the commissioner to take you guys out, right?
Won't do it. Won't do it.
This is a big old vote to say.
But I want to give you a minute for rebuttal to anything that he said there. He was obviously a gentleman and didn't bring it down, so that's...
First statements.
Yeah, statements, fine, too. Does anyone want to take a one-minute rebuttal? Go ahead, Nikki.
I definitely come across as the least experienced candidate here. Mind you, though, I have been working in government and politics and legislature and lobbying and trade and housing since I've been able to work, and I'm very proud of that. I've learned a lot. I've had really great mentors. I've spent quite a few hours in local businesses helping those employees find a place to live. It was, I was paid to quite literally go into small, target small businesses, go into their offices, shake the hands of the owner, shake the hands of the employees, and ask if they know of anybody looking for housing. So, to say that, you know, we all don't come with experience that makes us capable of doing the job is a little short-sighted. I've had in-depth conversations with every one of these candidates except for Commissioner Maddox, and I would love to have that conversation with you about what makes these candidates capable of doing the job. I may be young, but I've been through quite a few life experiences that have grown me up very fast. My mom and my sister are both business owners. My sister started her business on unemployment. She had nothing. She had just lost a huge lawsuit, and she was trying to take over the old company after her employer passed away. And so, she had nothing to start with, nothing to start with. And now she has four work trucks, a booming business in Orlando, Florida, cleaning floors, a floor cleaning company. My mom owns a cleaning company, and that's how she came here to the States from Puerto Rico is by cleaning houses. And now she gives opportunities to women who are looking for their first start in business here in Florida. So, you know, I think every single one of these candidates comes here with a level of expertise that will benefit the county as a whole. Thank you.
One thing a lot of people don't know about me is that I spent a lot of time as a sparring boxer. Another thing that you guys might not know is, just before this debate started, we heard that the incumbent, Mr. Maddox, was going to be late, and we all agreed, let's give him some more time. So, this really has been a cordial race. I understand how to box and then how to hug afterwards, right? I have nothing but the utmost respect. And so, the rebuttals that I give, I hope they don't seem like I'm slinging mud. It might be bleach. It's going to keep you clean. It just might sting your eyes a little bit, right? So, the only rebut that I would have to that is, with record comes a record. And sure, there has been 12 years. I'm a high school teacher and an adjunct college professor. 12 years is almost old enough for somebody to sit in my classroom. That's a long time. And so, while experience matters, so does a record. Thank you.
Well, certainly, I would say, character matters. Integrity matters. Dignity matters. Transparency matters. All of these things are very important to me. This is how you lead.[1723.61] This is how you lead, this is how you have an understanding. And so going back to the time that I was appointed to be the chairman a few years ago of the Tallahassee Police Department Citizen Advisory Council, I was told that that was going to be a very hard job to do. And I asked him why, and he said, because, and let me be pragmatic, the black community is not interested in working along with law enforcement. But as a mediator and as a community leader, I thought it would be beneficiary to bring those two together to bridge the gap of our local law enforcement in our most vulnerable communities. It didn't take me long, I didn't have a learning curve. We had to hit the ground running. As your commissioner, that's exactly the things that I do now in the community, I'm not doing because I'm seeking public office. I do because I love Tallahassee. This is where my children are, and recently my sixth grandchild is. And so I am excited to see what we can do. So as far as being in office, as far as integrity and dignity and respect, I will leave with that charge. I don't discount that the commissioner doesn't have the experience. But when we all step into capacity, when you first become a mom or a dad, you don't have time for a learning curve. You have to hit the ground running because that child is depending on you. I'm Rudy Ferguson, I approve that message.
All right, so along those lines, let's go to another question, and Rudy, we'll kick you off with this one. If you're elected, what are going to be the top two or three priorities that you're going to pursue as a new county commissioner? And we'll go up and down the line on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Well, as like I said earlier, as the chairman of the Citizens Advisory Council of the Tallahassee Police Department, also have the privilege of serving on the Sheriff's Advisory Council, I believe that public safety is first and foremost, and let me tell you why. We're all business owners in here. If we have gun violence as rampant as every other day, someone is shot or injured, that affects your business, that affects our community. Moreover, we have three major institutions of higher learning here. That means if someone is coming from New York and looking to come to Florida State or FAMU or TCC for that matter, they're going to look at the crime rate. And of course, when you look at our crime rate, gun violence in our city is up, it's moving. In fact, more guns are hit in the street every day coming out of locked cars and unlocked cars. So if public safety is not at the foremost of our concerns, your business will suffer. Your business will go under because no one will want to mind. Now, I would also say this, my second one in regards to that is affordable housing. We're doing okay, but we can do better. I believe everyone wants the roof over their head. And lastly, I would also go with the furtherance I'm saying, poverty and homeless. We have an increase in uptick of homeless people migrating to Tallahassee. We can't shoo them away. We have to find the medium of how is we, as the all-American city, as we call ourselves, how do we deal with the influx of homelessness and how do we put things in place? So those are my top three, that would be public safety, affordable housing, and moreover, poverty and homelessness. I'm Rudy Ferguson, I approve that message.
All right, Josh?
Yes.
And you, Nicky.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, Josh, you've got two minutes.
So, since the beginning of this campaign, I've been talking about one thing. Now, I know this seems ambitious, but it's really not. There is a catch-all for this. I don't have to give you three, I'll save you some time. I know some people are tired of hearing me talk anyways. Making public investments, investments a more equitable endeavor is something that will help curb and mitigate things like affordable housing, things like crime, things like city infrastructure, county infrastructure, things like environmental issues. The way that we allocate our resources, whether they're financial or infrastructurally or the infinite amount of ways that resources can be allocated to us, we have to make them a more equitable endeavor because there are things that we are doing that are deleterious to the fabric of Leon County. When we expand the urban services area in a piecemeal way, we see that the true structure of the city changes, and so the investments that are going to the south side or to the west side or to French Town or to Highway 20 aren't as potent because the direction of the city is being invested in one way. That's not altogether a bad thing, but we cannot become top-heavy with any amount of our investments. I can see us on a course for doing that. It was said that we're doing okay with affordable housing. I think that every economist on this side of the greatest country on earth would disagree. Affordable housing is a crisis across the board, nationally, locally, and statewide. There are things that we have to do to get in front of this, and it's something that is touching every average median income. It's not just affecting poor people or middle-class people, it's affecting everybody. Thank you.
Nicky, please.
I would like to have the question repeated if possible, please.
If elected, what two or three issues or priorities are you going to have as a new county commissioner?
Sure. I really commend all the candidates on their wonderful ideas and ways that they see possible opportunities for benefiting the county. However, I deal with solutions, I don't really deal much with problems. I have ideas that I know have been used other places. One thing I've been championing for is more childcare services in Leon County. We're at a loss for that right now, and I've heard that outcry from hospital staff, they want a childcare within the hospital. That's something we can do, that's something we can work with that institution to facilitate in this county, that's tangible. Other things that I've brought to the table is in regards to housing. I've worked at almost every apartment community in Southwood. There's a large population of people that live in Leon County because I leased them their first apartment here, and I've had a lot of people come back to Leon County to grow their families. So I want to provide resources for those people, reasons as to why they should stay, huge reasons why they're leaving. Their income does not equate to being able to afford a one-bedroom apartment. So someone who, you know, is coming here as a young professional with dreams and ideas to start a new business, they're probably going to look elsewhere. So I want to keep all of my responses as realistic as possible, and I would definitely love to focus on what we actually can do and what Commissioner Maddox has the capability of doing as well. And mental health and affordable housing has been the forefront of my discussions. A lot of people that are living in poverty suffer from PTSD, a lot of them are veterans, and they don't get the care that they need in order to live a lifestyle here in Tallahassee that is a good quality of life. So let us not forget that the people who are living in poverty once had a home, they have families, they have lives, they still have lives, they have futures. So let's keep the focus on how we can provide that for our residents rather than solving an issue that is not completely going to be solved by one person or another.
Nick, same question for you. If you're re-elected, what's going to be your top two or three priorities going into office?
Thank you. Well, going into these next couple of years, we're all going to be dealing with a possible recession and inflation is out of control. I think the number one thing I'm going to be focused on is making sure that we try to maintain our tax rate moving forward and make whatever cuts necessary in government that we have to make and be sustainable long-term and keep the burden off of you as business owners as well as our citizens and their property taxes as well. Affordable housing is something that we're just, is killing us, is killing us out there. But more so than the buyer's market is killing us, the rental market is out of control. Right now, we're looking at different things to do there. One thing we're talking about doing, while also just kind of being cognizant of how we are maybe hurting some business owners there or homeowners there, is how do we prevent a stair-step to increase in the rental prices going forward? So we're talking about, okay, so maybe if you go more than three percent, you have to let your renting know and give them the ability to say they can no longer, before you increase to that three percent, give them a month or two, to let them know and so they know it's coming, they can make decisions on that, on whether they want to stand up for situation. Violent crime, CSC is going to be huge there getting to our children. I think we all know the age range that we're trying to work with here. The CSC is going to be huge there. Building school-to-work pipelines, Leon Works, getting more kids involved in the trades. I mean, there was a period of time where we pushed our kids toward college and saying, you gotta go to a four-year college to make it. What I believe now is that what's hot right now is being a plumber, being a welder, making a hundred grand doing that kind of stuff. Because there's just not people in the market doing that kind of thing. So getting our young people interested in those trades and rebuilding themselves to really get involved in those trades. Last but not least, giving you guys access to capital to help you build your businesses and put money back in the pipeline for us, especially when it comes to our MWBEs, really, really trying to help them build, really trying to help our business community sustain us through this coming recession. Because I do believe it's going to be, it's going to be what it was last time. I don't think it's going to be quite that, but we are going to go through a few years where it's going to be tough out there. It's going to be important that we keep you guys prioritized and our community prioritized and keeping the rate low and going ahead and also making the cuts where necessary, but trying to maintain a good business environment here in Leon County.
All right. And so Jackie, the rest of the response is going to be one minute so we can get a few more questions in, including our members. One question that came from the members, and I'm going to paraphrase it because the CSC's been brought up, and so let's just continue on that vein, and Josh will lead with you. Is the Children's Services Council, was that a good policy by the county commission? And what would you do differently?
One of the themes of my campaign, because one of the things that we have to do is all live together once this is over, and I know that right now I'm amongst neighbors, even up here, neighbors. But one of the themes of my campaign has been unintended consequences, right? Whether it was good or bad, you know, that's the past, and a lot like Nicky, we'll leave that there. I do think, however, the unintended consequences that people were pointing to and being called sensational as it occurred, has occurred, and I do think we have to deal with that too, just as responsibly and just as enthusiastically as we pass it, the unintended consequences that have spooled out from it. And so I'm not being vague and very truthful with you, I'm talking about the way that the funding channels have been publicized lately. We have to think about unintended consequences before we go into anything, things we disagree with or agree with, and I do think that that's a solid point. Thank you.
Nick, please explain, you know, one minute, why you think the CSC was a good idea?
Well, I think if we're talking about per se what the county did, what we did was, we gave the ability, the city as well, to be on the ballot. Sixty-plus percent of people in Leon County said it was a good idea. And what I think moving forward is, is making sure that we hold the CSC board accountable for such things. Are they funding the things that we need to fund? Are we seeing the results from it that we expected to see? What we expected to see was organizations who do the best work with our children be funded and solutions that would help our children be funded and that would help not only our graduation rates, which is pretty high already, but also our crime rates and other things like that, keep these kids occupied. So when I look back at it, do I regret the decision to put it on the ballot? Honestly, I don't. I felt then, I'll say now, the electorate needed the ability to be able to decide whether or not they wanted the Children's Services Council. What I'll be doing moving forward as a county commissioner is holding that council accountable to make sure that they're funding organizations and that the results are happening that we expect to happen when sixty-plus percent of the folks here in Leon County said that they wanted Children's Services Council.
All right, Nick, I think you go ahead. You've got a minute.
I don't believe anything done for children is ever done in vain, truth be told. I want to focus on one thing here, it's apprenticeships. When I worked for that trade, I saw children who were just getting started, just wanting to do something on their own, maybe get out of a situation at home that they've been part of for too long, and a lot of their resources came through as being an apprentice, by learning from other business owners just like you who take them under their wing and give them something to do, give them a job, let them learn from you, give them the ability to go out on their own and decide, is this the way that I want to, the direction I want to take my life? And even then, at the end of the day, if they decide this isn't for me, at least they have something to fall back on, somewhere to turn their head to when they have no sense of direction in life. And that's a cross point that we all come to in our lives. Do we want to continue doing this? But if we were to change our minds, at least we have something we know where we can profit off of and build a future on.
Thank you, Rudy. Thank you.
I would say investing in our children, which is what I do, communities and families and young people in our community, and investment in them is for the future, it's now. How we do that is so important, we must revisit the policies and the procedures of how CAC works. Is it at the best quality service? No, I don't believe that. I don't believe that is pushing the necessary funds to those boots-on-the-ground agencies who are working with kids ultra-at-risk. We may always say there's at-risk kids. All of our children, ladies and gentlemen, are at risk for something, but there are those ones that are ultra-at-risk who grew up in an environment who have the slightest inclination of where their hope lies. We have to really look at that again and say, as a commissioner, I will bring that to the forefront and say, let's revisit this, point from point to point, to ensure that those dollars are going to the necessary agencies who are actually boots-on-the-ground and not just agencies who are getting paid. I'm Rudy Ferguson, and I approve that message.
All right. So Josh, go ahead.
I answered it. Yeah, I answered it first, yes, sir.
All right, so we got everyone covered. So, you know, there's some philosophical issues there, where is government the solution or the problem, you know, to some of these issues that we're facing? Another question that I came up, you know, I wrote these questions, but kind of listening to you all, and I'll get to a couple of our questions from the members, is, and I'll start off with you, Nicky. I don't think you led off on any of these yet. Here you are going to be potentially a county commissioner or a re-elected county commissioner. We are in this county that has a state capital and it has a city called Tallahassee. So how do you, what's your perception of the city and its leadership or lack thereof? I'd be interested in knowing, starting with you, Nicky, what is your perspective of the city? Is it a liability or is it a partner in achieving the goals that you're setting out for the county? One minute.
Yes, I believe partnerships are fruitful. I truly think that the city does have a responsibility to all the residents to incorporate anybody who wants to be part of it. When I worked at a lobbying firm, I worked for a lobbying firm that represented the city of Tallahassee, and I saw a lot of their initiatives, and I read over those documents, and I delivered a lot of those documents. And I kept saying, where is the vivaciousness that all of the residents of the city are looking for? Where is the livelihood? We want Tallahassee to be this up-and-coming city, right? But we don't have half of the necessary things that make a city that way. I'm from Orlando, I'm not going, I love entertainment, I love going to concerts and festivals and new restaurants, and I want Tallahassee to be seen that way. I love that Tallahassee's small, I don't want to make it this, you know, conglomerate city. However, I do want to see a lot of the things that make other cities, their residents a lot happier. So let's tailor the city towards the residents more so than just all the other things that we've been focusing on in the past. One way we can do that is targeting the young people here, giving them reason to stay and reason to build a family here.
Nick?
No matter how you feel about what's happening at the city of Tallahassee or if you agree or if you're fans of the city of Tallahassee or not, they are absolutely a partner in this deal that we have called Leon County. They are not the enemy, and we have to work with them each and every day moving forward. Will we differ on policy sometimes? Yeah, we may differ on policy sometimes, but just like I wouldn't criticize these candidates and say what they can and can't do, what I believe is that the city's doing the absolute best they can to try to meet the bar that we set as Leon County residents on what we would like to see from our city and county. And so we'll bounce off of each other, but do I think they're a partner in this deal? They're an absolute partner. Can we work with the city? Yes, we can work with the city. Have we worked with the city? Yes, we have worked with the city. Will we continue to do so? Yes, we will continue to do so. And I believe that there's some good people on the city commission. I look forward to continuing to work with them as a county commissioner, and Leon County will lead the way on some things. Do I believe the city has done some things that we should be proud of? Absolutely. Do I think that we all should agree on every single thing that they've done? No, we probably won't. But one thing we cannot debate is whether or not they're a partner. The city is an absolute partner and player in the game of what Leon County and city of Tallahassee looks like.
Rudy?
Well, as a community facilitator, I have had the privilege of working with city and county commissioners dating back to the days of Mayor John Marks and on, and I've had the privilege of addressing them in issues regarding our city and regarding our county issues. As a community facilitator, that is very important as a citizen, and I believe the working relationship, we're never always going to agree, but we can agree to get the very common, basic welfare things that are needed for our citizens. We can agree with that. Personal side, issues, egos, and who gets what, what credit, we're one Tallahassee, we're one Leon County, we work together. One thing that I saw, and I'll say this quickly, that I saw with nine eleven, and all of us can remember what happened in New York City, and I can say this, that when that situation occurred, they all became all one New Yorkers. They moved together exponentially, and that's the kind of commissioner I will be, a consensus builder, to make sure we address the needs and your concerns. Thank you.
Josh?
I think this may be one of the most important questions posed because it speaks to sentiments of things that we're seeing in our newspaper. Far be it besides trying to get a vote or knock a door, if there is any political figure, incumbent or politician or somebody running for office candidate who does not see the county and the city as partners, they should have to leave town. The city of Tallahassee will absolutely be a partner to the county commission. I am endorsed by former city commissioners, county commissioners, current city commissioner, even a school board member in there. The cross-pollination between county and city governance is robust, and if there's people that don't believe that they're partners, that would just be tanking our local government process and our local governance process. Absolutely a partner, I agree wholeheartedly.
Before we get to closing, I want to ask one more question that came from... Before we get to closing, I, I wanna ask one more question that came from uh, you know, the membership, and so we might go a few minutes over, is that okay, anybody? So let's, um, we mentioned crime, and uh, so let me ask this question, considering that nearly ninety-one percent of the shootings in Tallahassee are drug or, and or gang-related, what will you do to change that? And so we'll start off with you, Josh.
Um, I'll change it by staying consistent. Um, every day, every day of my life, I walk into a classroom at a Title I high school, I teach seniors at Godby High School. The boys that I teach in particular, because boys, African-American boys from the ages of eighteen to thirty are usually uh, the people that we see with this. I see, sit with, love, and deal with every day, the very population that I think needs the biggest bridge built in some of these issues, right? We can no longer skirt around the fact that uh, at the school I teach at, which is a beautiful school, I would teach nowhere else, um, but there are demographic concerns when it comes to crime. And the things that I have done in my classroom is show up, and that's what I will do here. We have to invo- uh, uh, invest in workforce as well as small business, because investing in small businesses without workforce undergirds nothing and gives opportunity to nothing. Thank you.
Nicky?
I, I, I definitely, um, you know, I wanna give a huge round of applause to Josh for being such a stellar teacher and such a role model for those students, um, and, and moving past that. I definitely want us to understand that the people that are involved in, in this culture is just that, it's a culture. Um, and to change the culture, you must facilitate other opportunities. Um, you know, people get involved in things simply because they don't have money, simply because they don't have educational resources, simply because they don't have um, someone in their life to tell, to, to turn them to the other direction. Um, so, and a lot of what Rudy has done in the community has been, has been just that. So um, let's change the focus on, you know, not just drugs and crime and all these things that all four of us would love to end, but individually can't tackle on our own. We have to make sure that this conversation is about the real issue, and it's people not having resources, people not having a way to provide for themselves, they may turn to things that are not going to benefit them and their futures.
Uh, Rudy? Okay.
Thank you so much. Um, as a certified instructor, um, I teach um, youth anger management one-on-one for our young people. Also teach gang resistance education, because it's so important for our young people to know that they have an opportunity to become positive, productive citizens. With that being said, um, one program or policy alone is not gonna fix our gun problem in Tallahassee. No matter how much money we throw at it, it still won't fix it. Uh, I believe that we need to create comprehensive strategies in addressing those issues in regards to why would, why would a young person resort to a gun? We are, we have to classify gun violence as a public health crisis, because it is just that. I know it didn't affect all of our communities, but remember, we all Leon County and Tallahashtians, and what affects one side of town directly affects all of our, our communities indirectly. So we have to look at this from a point that everyone, no matter what part of town you live on, or where you live, come together, let's bring those strategies together to get our young people together. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. So I'll start from the bottom up. Um, I'll say that right now, I had a conversation, I had a conversation with the police department during the PVA um, endorsement, which I received. Um, and I asked him, I said, why don't you do more c- community police, since we don't have enough policemen? Right now, there are about four hundred policemen. He said, in order for us to be adequately uh, staffed, we need seven hundred. Um, what we've decided to do at the county, if, if the sheriff sends it over, we think he, we think he needs it. And so we, we, we've committed to, to funding his uh, council on, on men and boys uh, uh, initiative, as well as other things. And so also, building that pipeline, school to, school-to-work. We talked about, talked earlier about uh, welding and other things and, and, and other professions that our kids can get into. Maybe getting our kids to understand and partner with the schools that, hey, by the time you leave school, you can have a trade that you're into, that even if you go to college, you can work during college and make a lot of money during that trade. These are things that we get our kids involved in, they're, if they're in gangs, it's a lifestyle, right? But uh, the boy on the corner only makes about what, thirty grand or so? What if I can convince him that, that if you go to this trade, you can make, you can make fifty, sixty, take care of your whole family, and, 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 and more? Uh, last but not least, I'll say the Children's Services Council again, we have to hold them accountable, to get our kids involved, and spend those dollars in ways that we had imagined, and get to that, as Rudy said, and he was very correct on this, be at-risk, at-risk. Because it's not the kid that's going to the program, it's the kid that's home who can't get to the program, and instead is going to the streets that we really need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna get to the closing comments here, and, and Nick, you'll start off with, and each of you will have a minute. So Nick, kinda lead us off on, as we start closing this out.
What you have here is you have a slate of pretty amazing people that could all do this job. Uh, when I said experience, I didn't say experience in a way that they could not do the job, I believe they all could step in here and learn. Uh, but what I believe right now is that when I look at, when we look at inflation, when we look at affordable housing, when we look at crime, and we look at getting you guys access to capital to help our economy, what you need is someone who's done the job, and I've been there, I've been your partner, and I think I've done a pretty good job at it. And if I have not, I'm willing to sit down with you and, and, and hear about what I can improve on as a Leon County commissioner. I want your vote, I need your vote, and understand that together we can. One thing that we absolutely have to do is break down the barriers of our neighborhoods within Leon County. As, as Rudy said, I can't agree more, we're one Leon County. We're not north side, south side, east and west, we're not District Four, Three, Two, and One, or Five. What we are is one Leon County, and so uh, as I, if I, if I make it back to office, when I make it back in the office, what I ask that NIBA, which I know, I know you all will be willing to do, that we, that we take on initiatives in, in French Town, in the south side, to uh, road cleanups and things like that, and let these people know, let the people know in this side of town that we care. But also that we invite others, others that haven't been in our neighborhood, we invite them into our neighborhood, let them see how we do it as well, cause we are indeed one Leon County, and we can, together, we can do anything we can, uh, uh, we like to. Thank you.
Nicky?
Thank you so much for coming here today and taking the time to learn about me and the other candidates and, and a lot of the things that we would like to see here in Leon County. Um, I've lived in almost every zip code of Leon County, and the problems that I see in one, I see in the other, no matter where they are. So it's, it's time we start discussing and, and making policies and legislating um, issues that we can resolve, um, and also opening the, the conversation up to issues that have arisen in the recent, you know, the pandemic. Um, we need to move forward, we need something new, we need something fresh, we need someone with um, tenacity and, and more um, background experience and how getting things done can actually improve the future of a constituency. Um, and, and I'm very appreciative of your time here today, thank you so much.
All right, uh, before we go to the next candidate, let me just remind you of the August sixteenth, uh, the county commission five seat. Um, if you um, still need to pay, you can hit up Cindy on the way out, or we can bill you, and um, don't forget to turn in your straw poll, um, um, to go ahead and give it to Catherine. And uh, and so, we'll end it with the next two, and uh, go ahead Rudy, and then Josh.
Again, thank you so much for allowing me to make my presentation and why I think that I'm the best candidate uh, for the position. I would say that number one, I am a servant leader, that's, that is something I've been doing.
Hold on one second, I didn't realize we're gonna be collecting that while you were talking, so, we're, we're gonna wait until we collect the, the votes. Sorry about that, didn't anticipate the, yeah.
The wrong.
We should start. Yeah. We'll start over again, okay? Yeah, I was wanting to collect those after we're done with candidates, so, no harm with that, we'll recalibrate, we're, we're flexible here. All right, so go ahead Rudy, I'll start again.
No, no problem, no problem at all. Uh, but I would say that I believe that I'm the best candidate for it, because I've been serving Tallahassee uh, for about thirty years, I'm fifty, and I started when I was twenty, and I'm proud of that. Uh, I may be the oldest candidate, but I believe I'm the more seasoned candidate in this regard, because I've seen Tallahassee make the changes throughout the years. I'm a consensus builder. Uh, my grandfather said something to me many years ago, he said, Rudy, when you found out your calling, your career would come easy. And becoming a pastor didn't make me a servant, what it did was elevate my service to my community, and service to the people that are in my community, serving the less fortunate, those who need, those who want. And I believe that I'll be that per, that candidate, that commissioner, that will listen to you, learn from you, that I'm able to lead for you, and I will give you my unless, uh, my, my underbider, uh, full attention, and I'll say this in closing, uh, run with Rudy, because Rudy will run with you in all regards, regarding your needs and your issues and your concerns. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here today, and I'm praying for the young lady, Kayla, I'm praying for her. I text my secretary, Kayla, say it again, Kayla, I text my secretary at the church to add it to the prayer list.
God, God knows what you're talking about.
Right, gotta make sure I spell her name right, just in case.
Josh?
Yes, sir.